The topics, people that they're far off, but they are happening every day. We think of North Carolina and Hurricane Helene that happened just within the last few days and the devastation that that caused. So keeping that in mind and the work that we have in front of us and the amazing opportunity that we have this year as Portland is changing its system of government and we have so many amazing candidates to choose from this year. We are excited to hear from these candidates tonight and be able to have them have their voice heard by you as you're making these important decisions when your ballot comes in a few weeks. So we'll just one more, all one more thing I'll mention is that in addition to these candidate forums, we are putting together a climate justice voter guide. And so that will be something that will, that hopefully candidates have contributed their statements and you'll be able to read about them. And we'll put that out in a couple of weeks when the ballots are coming up. And we'll also have an event on October 23rd that's a action night, that's a get out the climate vote action night. So we'll do some explaining about ranked choice voting and you can see our climate justice voter guide and be supported in making choices that fit your values. All right, without keeping you much longer, I would want to mention that the little booklets that you got maybe will be useful to you because I don't know about you, but it's a little bit hard to remember when we have so many wonderful candidates, exactly what all of them said. So you can write down notes in your little booklet if you would like to be able to remember that, that folks have said important things that you really like. And so, those booklets that we look at, using Jesse Barnett in the booklet and his not being able to come because he's supporting his partner on Rasha Shana, so we are supporting him in that.
The state is already requiring, um, sorry, the state is already requiring electric utilities to move to renewables. The courts have said we can ban methane gas in new constructions, which I would have loved to do. But transportation is the biggest source of carbon emissions and we can do something about that. We can invest in transit. Like bus, like rapid transit on, rapid transit on 82nd Avenue. We can invest in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. We can make safe to ride a bicycle again by backing down undangerous drivers who have run them up since the pandemic. Although it's a much smaller source of greenhouse gas emissions, I also want to talk about food. Lots of people think that eating local makes them climate friendly, but it's really what you eat that matters. Beef is bad, even if it comes from next door. Lentils, chickpeas are great. So are sardines. We need to educate people on that. Maybe even require grocery stores and restaurants to post that kind of information. Maybe hand everyone who comes into City Hall a great recipe for lentils. The Green Bay Packers football coach, Vincent Guardi, had a saying, waiting is everything, isn't everything, sorry, is the only thing. I say to you, brothers and sisters, climate isn't everything, it's the only thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that and hope you enjoy the concert. And so I would like to now introduce to you my coworker Denise Lopez, who is going to be our moderator for tonight and is one of your constituents in District Three. So Denise is going to take it from here. Yeah, District Three, come on. It's a people level event, so anytime you hear something you like, go right, laugh, whistle, stop for a pee, yeah, it brings a life, I feel like. Um, I have my own list of quick thank yous to get through before we get into the questions. Thanks to Taylor and the court for letting us a space, the cafe and the church. Thanks to Eddie and Co. for the tech support. This is our third candidate forum in just a week, so it's really been possible thanks to all of our amazing volunteers. Um, all right, so we have five questions for you all tonight. And then once we break, we'll have more touching time and you're all welcome to grab the hero if we're going to talk to and grill them on your, on all your questions. Um, all right, let's get started. As we all know, human caused climate change is a threat to human and other life on this planet unlike any we've seen before. The United Nations Environmental Panel on Climate Change warns that global greenhouse gas emissions must peak by 2025 and then reduce to about half of those emissions by 2030 to hopefully keep warming at a safe level. Most of this would be within your tenure if elected. If you don't achieve this goal, economic, social systems, food transportation and other governmental institutions will experience massive deterioration with the worst effects, as we know, will be felt by those who have done the least to cause this problem. Please share with us your policy priorities that will help Portland do its part to address climate change, build a more sustainable community and work toward environmental justice. And we'll start with Tiffany and work her way through.
Uh, oh, that's good. Uh, everyone has to meet and curious to have the timer.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Quan Malay, my pronouns are she/her. I am a public school teacher. I'm in my 16th year, I'm a public school teacher. I teach third grade at Sunnyside in our middle school, the only environmental focused school that we have in Portland public schools. Um, I, I say my mom, my mom. I'm a later, I have a seven year old and nine year old. I'm a leader in my union, I'm a community organizer and so thrilled to be here tonight and thank you so much. I, I know that some of my priorities, they are overlapping because I feel like that's, that's how things work. But one, the, the first one is we need to move away from fossil fuels. We need to reduce the need for fossil fuels. There wouldn't be a CEI hub, there wouldn't have been a deal with Zenith, um, you know, without that. So we have to make sure it's connected to the demand. So addressing that is really key. We need to decommission as much as possible any existing fossil fuel infrastructures. We need to prevent expansions of new facilities and that's including highways. Um, I was willing to lose that endorsement because I said very strongly that I do not want to, I can't do this. And in addition to that, we also need to make sure that, that transit is dependable, that it's frequent, that it feels safe, they're trying to go fast from that time. Um, the second one is really using the city's power and position to mitigate the harm of the CEI hub. I have sent, I've been down there a few times with a few different groups. I see a lot of potential. I think we have, uh, we have the power and the possibility to make the polluters be the ones that are carrying the risk. I've learned about risk bonding, this, a lot of this just makes a lot of sense. And it's also an obligation, this is something that I students will say loudly, like it's our, our job to be protecting the rivers, to be protecting the, our ecosystem, it's all, all connected. We can do some things that already have been done, like in Eugene, Oregon, like having a hundred foot setback from the river. Um, these are things that are within our, the possibilities for our city. And then a third one is making sure that when we're thinking about climate justice, we're thinking about climate resilience, especially for the most vulnerable in our community. Um, like we saw in the heat dome, it was elderly housed low income folks that were most likely to die. So we need to make sure that PISA funds are flowing to the frontline communities that are supporting our most vulnerable Portlanders and we need to make sure that, you know, it's not if, but when, we need to be preparing for extreme heat and wildfire smoke and I'll, I'll touch on all these, I'm sure with more questions. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, thanks so much for being here tonight. Uh, my name is Anthea Morillo or Angelita, for those of you who don't say Spanish. My family is originally from Paraguay and moved to the US when I was four years old. Um, and I think I have a really global perspective on climate justice because of that. The United States actually owns the majority of Paraguay's fresh water and has a lot of control over our natural resources. Um, and I think we see that happening locally as far as who gets access to natural spaces and, and that sort of thing. I'm an anti-hunger policy advocate in my day job, I work at Partners for Hunger Free Oregon. And we see that the climate justice movement is deeply tied to how unhoused people are experiencing climate during extreme heat and cold in the winters. Um, we also see how it's impacting farmers and our local food sources. So this is a top priority for us. This is survival for humanity, not for the planet. Um, the planet will continue to go on without us. So, uh, if we want to continue being in existence, this is up to us. And I think as far as what we have control over at city council, I echo a lot of what Tiffany said. I won't try to bore you with some of the reputations, but, um, my platform focuses a lot on public transportation and bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Um, I think that the fact that you don't have more rapid transit lines, obviously the city does not have jurisdiction over China, they're a separate entity, but I think that we can do things like expand road lanes on Sandy Boulevard in District Three to make sure that there's a rapid transit line going through there. I never owned a car, I am bike and pedestrian dependent and this might give me a boost in this space only. I don't have my license yet. I'm on every hundred drive, so here we are. Um, so I really think that public transportation is going to be a huge part of this and we need to do everything we can to push China to also expand, um, the bus access that we currently have. Um, and I've also learned from a few climate books in the room that, uh, you know, bus passes are only around 7% of China's budget. So I'd love to see more free transportation options available as well. You know, so much of our, uh, the microplastics in our space are also due to tire, wear and tear on the roads and that's not something that we talk about enough. Um, so, uh, thank you. So I'd love to also create a bike lane on Sandy Boulevard and expand bus access on 82nd Avenue. Um, and I think the CEI hub is also a top priority. The fact that 90% of Oregon's oil is stored there creates such a huge risk for us. These companies that are taking advantage of our people and making profits off of us should be the ones to incur the risk. We should not be the ones that are making the decisions. Um, and when I work with unhoused people, I am one of three candidates that has experienced untold fear homelessness in the city of Portland and I see this really impacting my neighbors. Um, just this past winter when it was really cold, my poor neighbor, uh, running out of time. Um, but I think that we need more protections for our unhoused neighbors and I'd love to see PISA dollars thrown, thank you.
Hey y'all, my name is Chris Flannery, I use they/them pronouns. I am also a union hero like Tiffany. I'm a housing advocate, my day job's at the Housing Bureau. I moved here from South Carolina and I do not want the climate to catch up, so we've got to fix this now. But seriously, I, I read that somewhere in the next 40 years, Portland should feel like Alabama and we don't want it. Thinking about climate priorities, as the message from Steve said, transportation's a huge part of that. Boring for you, I'm not going to repeat a lot, but fair is reliable, transit is the way forward. Uh, Daniel's going to have nothing by the time we're done. And in addition to transportation that we use for work, there's transportation that brings our food in. So when you're talking about shipping things from the middle of the country or from overseas, that's also impacting the planet. I'd love to see us have more local producers of food, of basic home goods. Uh, personally, I'd love to be able to afford plates made here by a Portland ceramicist, so figuring out ways to support our local art scene so that we're not importing cheap goods from other seas. In addition to transportation, surprisingly, housing construction, they get a faster slip than around 30% of carbon emissions. What can we do to change this? There are some new technologies coming out, uh, mass timber is something where they laminate lots of wood together, woods are renewable resource. There are of course environmental concerns based around harvesting. Uh, Oregon has a long history as a timber state, so we want to be careful around that. But this is something that we can look forward to that is renewable in a way that steel is not. There are alternative concrete, so not everything has to be made with cement. And so again, ways that we can look to the future, look to new technologies, because we do want to build more units, we need houses for people, we need to really build it around. Thank you all, thank you. And so figuring out again, the, the things that we can do as a city on that larger scale that will make impact. Other things, real quick and easy, we could have community composting. Uh, a lot of landfill gas comes from food that would otherwise be able to decompose or plate nutrients back into the soil is anaerobically decaying in landfills. We could recycle our own plastic. Sorry, I heard a beep, I was like, I get. So we can't ship our plastic overseas anymore, Ken is not buying it to recycle. So we're running into this issue of all this plastic that we've been told for years we can recycle and it's not true. We can't recycle that plastic, no one's buying it, no one's doing it. Uh, there are some potential applications, I see some cool stuff happening with ritter cleanups, uh, happening overseas where they take the plastic and they basically essentially press it into benches and then out for the public use, press it into building blocks to be able to construct some cheap and sturdy buildings. So there are wonderful ideas that we can borrow from. I want to bring this to Portland, I want to get this paper paper local and to be able to stay Portland and not turn into the subtropical Charleston I can't find.
Hi, Ron, my name is Helen Ozman. I go by a she/her, Ron. Um, I am a lifelong Portlander, I lived here, I lived here in Hawaii, I was born and raised in Southeast Portland. Um, my family are refugees from Somalia, so, um, they first went to LA and before, my mom was turned away immediately into Portland. Um, I got into the climate justice because, um, the house that I lived in since I was two years old is right behind a highway and then, um, we're also, uh, there's also an area we're not getting right next to us. Um, one thing that my family noticed when they moved here was a lot of us developed asthma, so I developed asthma, I have a twin brother and a little brother. Um, and then my mom also developed asthma. So as I got older, I learned that that was a result of our environment. Um, and that kind of, I, then I learned about like the air quality in like neighborhoods that would previously like Redmond and about Portland's history, learn like neighborhoods and Southeast Portland is, is an urban heat island. Um, and we have poor transportation infrastructure and there's like so many issues, environmental issues, um, in our neighborhood and, um, so that's why one of my top priorities is environmental justice and climate change. Um, a lot of it, it, it was just wildly neat to learn that, um, where is it, code was and where we lived was a huge determinant of our health. So, um, so yeah, when I was in, one of my top priorities if I was, um, city council is definitely maybe my neighborhood's more walkable. Um, when I was in high school, I, I was playing with 3D trucks and suddenly going to having a free public transit for young people who are in high school on a rural region that was coming. Right now, I think it's only for public schools, but every neighborhood we look at were, um, the original and we never did. Um, so having originally fast, making public transit more accessible for young people, for low income folks, I know that's like a discounted price, but like that's not enough. Um, I think there's just overall a lack of urgency around climate change in our city. You know, Portland is often private to be like super like, you know, like, you know, so. Yeah, I just, yeah, there's a lot of racism that we're in our, uh, root fish and sugar in, in our neighborhoods and I wish we talked about that more. Um, because I think a lot of, um, infected immigrants and refugees, a lot of us are in East Portland and like displacement is also a huge issue. So I hope that like even if we do get better public transit and whatnot and with like more affordable housing, help people don't get displaced because we are the enemy of this space. Um, so yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brett Thorholder and I am running for the six-three city council. And I just want to, there's a laundry list of things we need to do and have in doing, but I want to tell you a little bit more about myself and I want to say what we need on the, on the city council is actually people who have experienced many things happen. Uh, let me go way back, go back to junior high school, I organized first birthday observation in our city, in our, back in 1970, so a long time ago. But coming in more recently, uh, one of the things I've been in Portland, I've been here 46 years now, I started Bicycle Transportation Alliance in 1990 and it was in protest against the First Iraq War, saying we do not need oil so much that it's okay to go kill tens of thousands of people. We did succeed in stopping the war, I gotta admit that, but we did start a movement here that spread throughout the state of Oregon and throughout the United States to make the bicycle part of urban transportation. And it's very simple, just paint the stripes on the street. I worked there 10 years, I got excited about transportation and realized that Metro is the place where decisions are made on transportation. So I ran for Metro Council and won, I beat an incumbent and took a seat there and then helped oversee our regional land use transfer and transportation planning, including putting climate change considerations, equity considerations, in general sustainability issues into our long range transportation plans and land use plans. We did not expand urban growth fabric, we said let's build denser within our communities of people who walk and bike enough. And that's the forces law that we adopted with the support of the whole region. It's all you know, it was, it was honored to be there. Since I left Metro in 2013, uh, one of the things I'm most proud of is working on education. And you might think education, climate change, well, it was to get outdoor school restored in Oregon. Outdoor school, the week long science program for our kids, so they learn how to think, they learn how to analyze their place in the world and how the world works, was disappearing. Started Medford in the 1950s and was universal Oregon until we had the property tax rebellion in the nineties and we lost funding like we did for arts and for our libraries and our schools. So I created a new organization statewide and we got together, we passed a measure in 2016, the good news in 2016, uh, that is funding outdoor school for every kid in Oregon. So I, what I offered to you is actually a history of being effective, making actually change happen. I am a scientist, trained as biologist. I've been working on climate change since I was very young, as you might think, but also as a scientist in my work. And just finally, I am a board member of United Oregon and United Oregon works with low income and immigrants and refugees. I got climate justice on their list of six key issues to work on. And they now have a big program working on climate justice. Thank you.
Hi, Chris is right, a lot of, a lot of good ground to be covered here. I'm Daniel DeMello, I grew up in a climate movement. Nine years ago, I was arrested for blocking pipeline construction in the Redline neighborhood, uh, West Roxbury, Massachusetts with 350 PDA, not PDA, but 350, I'm good. And I am angry. The park per million was below 350 when I was born. Now we're at 426. We've seen a lot of people over the years come up and say that they had the experience changing our approach to climate and the parks per million keep going up. The parks per million here in Portland, the per capita emissions have been increasing since 2021. And I don't know about you, I'm an engineer by trade and I know if we want to end carbon emissions, it begins with reducing carbon emissions and we haven't been doing that the last couple of years and here's why. There is no such thing as an eco-friendly suburb. It's just impossible. You can't do, you maybe can get people to bike 10 miles every day to in front of your house, but it's not going to happen. The best way that we can make an impact on per capita emissions here in Portland is to allow more people to live here in Portland and to live in dense urban areas. And we're losing them, we're losing our families. We're losing the people who want to establish themselves and grow in our city. And I absolutely agree, I would love to see a way for us to fund free transit. I would love for that transit to be reliable and for it to be accessible, I'd love for it to be, uh, a nice trip. But three months ago, I was on the 20th, coming home downtown from an event, 4:55 on Thursday. And in the front of the bus, a man passes out, he's over there, so. And someone in our hands him and the man in our hands him runs off. I'm on the phone, 911, after going to be on hold for two and a half minutes, finally I get through to 911, they say, do you have an RPA? I don't. Is the bus driver having RPA? No. So they say, yell to the rest of us. And I yell to the rest of us and four people come and give me RPA. And that's what I love about Portland. When government fails, we step up and do the right thing. And I think the climate justice movement is the perfect example of that. You are leading a city, we're not. We cannot get our families to stay here and ride the bus if they have had this experience of seeing people overdose. If they've had the experience of seeing people use fentanyl on a bus, we cannot have people riding the bus and be excited about it if they're worried about their safety and they're worried about being traumatized. We need to end unsheltered homelessness, we need to demonstrate the basic confidence of our government if we have any hope of beginning to reduce our carbon emissions and fulfilling our commitments to the rest of this planet. I'm getting well, thank you.
All right, ooh, that's a flower. Um, a quick housekeeping thing before I forget, the bathrooms are down this hall. So if anyone needs to use them, you're not stuck waiting until we end. Also, don't be shy, grab some snacks, uh, if you're standing, I don't want to be, courtesy. Um, second question, PISA, which was mentioned by a couple of you. The Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund, or PISA, is a unique program strongly supported by voters. In recent years, its focus has shifted slightly to on city projects and cooperation with community-based organizations. These projects are intended to benefit the community, increase equity and reduce our collective greenhouse gas emissions and other climate impacts. As a Portland city councilor, will you ensure the Portland Clean Energy Fund remains focused on climate justice and community environment in line with what voters intended? Do you have more about your reasoning and your policy priorities on PISA? And, um, let's start with Chris and then go counter-qualify.
Someone else gets to figure it out now. Excellent. PISA was voted in and I believe we need to abide by the rule of voters and keep PISA for what it was meant for, community benefit. Hold up. Uh, some of the meaningful things I think that we can do that PISA is going to help us with and whether we fund them directly with PISA or whether we find other revenue sources and use PISA as a leveraging agent, uh, our electrical grid needs to be upgraded. Uh, it's, it's old, it's not ready for the future and we have such a potential to increase solar and hydro and. Uh, it's, it's old, it's not ready for the future. And we have such a potential to increase solar and hydro and wind power here. And not, I'm not talking hydro like Dan and anything, I'm talking like hydro, even wastewater instead of turbine. Uh, I would love to see us pilot small community-sized projects. Uh, think about your local community garden or uh if you're a Portland neighborhood emergency team person, think about your fricking sites where you've got that cash and supplies in case of emergency. Uh, imagine a community garden that has a couple of solar panels keeping a cooler through your, your veggies are fresh, but in case of emergency, a little bit of battery backup and somebody has a cooler to keep everybody's medications refrigerated, if that's a thing, right? If we are enduring a climate disaster, if we're enduring the uh fallout of the what is it, Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake that is potentially fifty percent likely in the next hundred years? That people need insulin, people need other medications that are refrigerated and we may not be able to get power back into the city, uh from power lines, from coal plants, from places outside of Portland. So I'd love to see us leverage the P S A opportunity, upgrade our grid, put in some small community projects for now to be able to pilot what worked and then continue to invest in what's been successful.
I like the little walking thing everyone's doing. It makes me feel like a uh an expensive youth assessor. Like, how expensive, I mean pricey. Anyways, P S A, uh that's what we're all here for. So the Portland Clean Energy Fund, I think we've seen that our current city council is really um trying to use those slush funds to backfill all of the city budgets. I was actually just in a previous meeting before I got here, um, a different interview where one of the district group candidates, who I'm glad to say is on here today, was talking about using P S A to fill the police budget in order to hire more police. I felt the same way, but I held my tongue. Uh, at least during the interview. Um, I think that whenever we have, thank you, it was really hard. Um, I think that whenever we have funding that is set aside for climate projects and for projects that specifically are supposed to uplift BIPOC communities in Portland, those are always the ones that are chipped away first. And we really have to stop doing that because there is a reason that we have such a low population of Black, Latino, and Indigenous people that live in the city of Portland and I would personally love to see that change. Um, as far as what P S A projects we need, um, it, it needs to focus on, you know, we have a lot of housing to build and a lot of that new housing needs to be focused on being sustainable and weatherproof so that it can outlast the climate changes that we are already seeing and the effects that we are experiencing today. Um, we cannot keep building the same buildings that we used to because they're simply not going to survive and neither are going uh our elders who are living without A C, many of whom whose lives were taken because of the heat wave this past summer and every summer in the past few years. Um, I also had a friend named Sean who was a big community organizer who worked a lot on placemaking in the city of Portland and he was very passionate about creating um food gardens within city parks and actually using our natural spaces within community and having it be a public space that people tend to where there are community agreements. And I'd love to see advancements on that through P S A as well. Thank you.
I think it's the job of our next city council to make sure that P S A is as strong as a program as possible. I had the privilege of um going with three fifty P D X on a tour to see a lot of the different P S A projects. It felt kind of like a field trip day because you guys to a lot of different sites and the diversity of the different projects was truly astounding. It was amazing. Some of the projects were seemingly smaller ones and some of them were quite large. Um, one that I think about a lot was uh a de-paving project that had been done at Oliver Middle School and as someone that has worked in public schools for sixteen years and has fought for funding, I know that sort of de-paving at an under-resourced school is rarely something that's gonna be at the top priority of a list on a list. And so that's why P S A and this process for P S A is so important. Um, you know, the P S A fund should not be used to fill budget gaps, should be used to fill holes. Um, I am gonna always lean on process. I think it's really important that uh we have a process that we're making sure that the original voices of who first started P S A are part of the planning, that continue to be part of it. Um, that, you know, like I was saying earlier, that we're making sure that frontline community members who are closest to the pain, closest to the problems are also going to be closest to the solutions, so they're also at the table. I support having a specific committee and on for the new, on the new city council that's specific to at least for the first year um P S A and for making sure that we're increasing community participation, access to funds. Thank you.
So in the system, all of us up here, we're elected, we're going to have the support technically of at least twenty five percent of voters. And I think it's really important because this system is untested to say that we will not interfere with the will of voters. We wanna make a change, we'll come back. And that's my question to you today. I have some issues with P S A, but I will not make those changes without coming back to you and making a good case for it. Because I think the democracy, the rule of law, the law. I think it's really easy to come out and say that we shouldn't use P S A dollars to fund budget gaps when you don't have to look in the eyes hundreds of people working at B B O, where you can eyes tell them that you're gonna have to do that at all. But that's what filling a budget gap means. If we don't fill those budget gaps, we're gonna lose hundreds of people doing good work. I would, I probably wouldn't throw that money at the police. And I think that's, that's a mistake to throw that money in that direction. But my question to you is, P S A, we have two big commitments there, right? At least three, actually, when you think about it. You've got your carbon emission reductions, you've got your justice commitments, and you've got your safety commitments. And so my question to you is this, how much of a reduction in carbon emissions are you willing to sacrifice to save one life? How much? Because that's the question here. When we move P S A dollars towards community justice, we are moving dollars away from saving lives potentially. We might be saving a different life, but fundamentally, this city was built on carbon emissions and every day that we continue to not reduce those emissions in exchange for uh economic development here, we are damming people overseas to death. There is one city in this country that has been very successful at reducing its carbon emissions in the last five years, Detroit. And today, we are behind them in terms of economic development.
P S A amazingly and surprisingly created this huge amount of revenue that no one guessed at. So isn't that amazing? I mean, usually we're saying, how much do we cut for everything, right? And what do we have to give up? In this case, we have the opportunity, I should say, what more can we do? And I think the issue here is, what are we achieving? What are the metrics of success? And what are the best ways to invest these dollars that reach the goals that the, that this program is set up to do? And we don't have to talk about what do we give up because there's more than we ever expected. We have to do a good job or else the people who are paying those taxes will say we don't want to pay that many taxes again. So we need to make sure that there's accountability and good programs and I think that the gender direction is straight. And that gives you another minute and ten seconds.
Um, so I don't agree with what P S A, um, the money being used towards other stuff. Um, I had someone at the city tell me that it was fine because it's still going to be like the chemicals, but um, but the money belongs to the community and the wishes still continue to be with the community. Um, I think P S A can um continue to respond to acquire the communities, especially immigrants and refugees. Um, I remember I bought a bread um for P S A, it was like a s- like a five thousand dollar bread and we got to teach, you know, community members how to recycle because our recycling system is really complicated and um, and I got to teach them about that and it was culture and civic and we also got to teach them how to cook wheels. Um, so I think um the funds should be used to empower communities. Um, I think there's also the potential to do like workforce development stuff within the green um job industry. Um, I'm starting to see a few workforce development programs, but it's not really reaching um our, our communities and BIPOC communities. So um, if there's a way that that can, you know, continue that, if there's a way that can be invested in, I think would be great. Um, and I think also like entering the sense like programs that um where we get to turn public, we get to use public spaces and um no great gardens and uh I think overall like a lot of people don't understand like where their food comes from and um so there should be, I think, education around our food system. Um, I know there's like the Black Futures Farm, David Provence, like fish and water, like a birdie, that's exactly supporting nonprofits like that and encouraging BIPOC um communities to go into that field would be really great. So, yeah.
This one's exciting. I heard some chatter about it in the audience, but hopefully some of you will be excited. For the first time in city's history, it recently allocated funding for the maintenance of trees planted in the right way, also known as street trees. The sixty five million uh allocated over the next five years fall short of the one hundred million fully needed to support this new program and all of the money comes from P S A. To successfully close the shade equity gap in Portland, we need to find a secure, long-term source of funding to street tree maintenance. What are your suggestions on how the city can identify and secure stable funding for maintaining street trees? And how do you view your role as a city council member in ensuring shade equity? And this time, um, let's start with Daniel and let's go.
Oh, there we go. Oh, man, the tree question, the hard question, guys. Oh, gosh. Uh, I don't know if you saw the auditor, the ombudsman's report the other day, uh where we had someone uh with, the city went out and said, you have to type down the street and what's on the property. And they complained that it was a problem, right? Uh, this funding problem is a problem. We as a city will underfund it because of those ballot measures passed in the nineties, we have maybe a third to a half as much property tax as we otherwise would have. The funding question is really hard. I have called and talked with more than fifteen thousand Portlanders in the last couple uh in the last, of course, this campaign. And I talked with a lot of people about, you remember the eviction representation I had drawn about? At the time, my partner was viewing every court case in eviction court on Zoom. I was sitting next to him, day in and day out, we would see tenants who otherwise would have been able to stay in their apartment if they had representation. And everyone I talked to on the phone says, that's great, I want to be able to fund representation. I was a little bit unsure about the particular way that tax was put together, but the reason why I voted against it, and that measure lost eighty twenty. The reason why I voted against it is because I voted for the homelessness tax measure and I haven't seen any reduction in homelessness. I voted for the preschool for all measure and I haven't seen any increase in the number of preschool seats available. I think we, if we need to find additional funding sources for things like street trees, for things like free transit fares, for things like the climate justice work that is absolutely necessary in the city, we have to demonstrate change when it comes to unsheltered homelessness because there is no issue, when I go door to door, that people say more often is their most important issue. We have to end unsheltered homelessness so that people will trust us with their money to keep their, to keep trees alive. Thank you.
Well, number one, I'd like to question the number. Uh, we've seen so many times coming from our uh governments that it will cost this much to achieve the goal that we have. I think one thing we need is more attention to the data and I don't know if it's quite true. The other one, which something really pissed me off is I'm a long time plant tree planner, Friends of Trees. For forty years, I've been planting trees, planting trees. Every year, I do it by bike. We did it in a twenty eight degree rain one time. It's like, why aren't we doing it by bicycle in twenty eight degree rain? But the city cut its contract with the Friends of Trees, now organize the people Portland, actually all across the state, with the Titan Portland, to go out and work with each other as neighbors and plant trees and then care for them. So trees can be a pain in the butt as a property owner. They break their sidewalks, they drop leaves, everything else. You gotta love your trees to be, keep, have a tree planted in their street. If you planted it with your neighbors, you love your tree. I have six street trees planted with Friends of Trees before the city cut that. Those trees probably would not have been there if I waited for a city bureaucrat to come and put a tree in my street. And then, of course, it turned out that one of the reasons that they didn't want to work with Friends of Trees is because they said only certain trees were qualified and then they couldn't plant them because nurseries weren't growing there. So the city killed a fantastic partnership that would probably end up having this number be much lower if we actually use the people power of the city to plant trees. And again, so I am skeptical. And when I hear a hundred million dollars, uh that's a lot. So I wanted to look at that first before I made it, and then and I wanna get Friends of Trees, it's time right back with the city.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it would be really cool if um we're a bit creative and you probably found that on trees. Uh, so I think public and partnerships would be great. So partnering with um businesses um or even like CEOs or corporate organizations uh to uh come together and plant trees together, especially in uh neighborhoods that already don't have um that large tree canopy. Um, so I live on uh eighty seven and I was near by the eighty second math station on eighty second and um, I know there's a lot of work being done right now on eighty second, um, and making it, you know, more safer, um, planting more trees. Um, there's a lot of businesses there and there's schools there, there's, you know, there's a residential area as well, there's housing, uh houses. Um, so I think finding ways where we can partner with people, um, with organizations, businesses to plant trees um would be really cool. Um, I think that and prioritizing neighborhoods uh that are, you know, um that are already the islands, um, and, you know, who face a lot of heat-related deaths when, um, you know, summer comes around and um, yeah, just get, they, they get into the question.
One hundred million and sixty five million, bridge the gap and what?
Uh, sorry, repeat the question. Uh, yeah, it's a sixty five million allocated, a hundred million needed. First part is how are you, suggestions on how to identify and secure stable funding? But the, the other question is how in your role as a city council member, do you, um, do you shade it?
All right, so let's start with, I come up with thirty five million dollars on the spot, I would be such a champion in this election. That would be amazing. Uh, my thought part is that you can't save your way out of an income problem. And I pointed out, we don't have enough revenue in the city from the services that we all need and deserve. We just don't. Uh, so what are some ways that we can work with what we got? Uh, there are several places where uh businesses are paying taxes in Portland, when you make a sales revenue over a certain amount. Uh, short-term rentals like Airbnb, they pay taxes. You know, we as human beings pay income taxes. Uh, so what happens if we're all doing better? What happens if every one of us is making a living wage and is able to go out there and go out to eat every week if they want to? Shocking. You know, what, what happens if we really do end up in a city that is just more prosperous to get? Uh, and so when I think about ways to fix our ongoing long-term financial issues, people are very resistant to new taxes. Uh, I think we need to fix the old taxes, but until then, there are things we can do under the current set of restrictions to be able to, to get further on. That sixty five million um out of a hundred for the next five years, we can fund adequately for the first few years, right? We can make sure that we are moving forward with what needs to happen. And if staff is saying it's gonna take a hundred million dollars, I know it's such a staff over trying to make my best guess because I'm not an expert in tree care, not an expert in maintenance. And I think it's great that the city is finally taking on this responsibility instead of just fighting the homeowners when something happens to the street tree that you need a permit to pern anywhere. Right? I think we do need to step up as a city if we're gonna hold people accountable to these trees and have these rules that Right? I think we do need to step up as a city, if we're going to hold people accountable to these trees and have these rules, that we need to also be investing in taking care of them. So I'm still forgetting there. Uh I also think that shade equity is one of the best ways for us to fight the heat island effect that is causing deaths in our town and that we need to continue to make those investments.
I would love to also say that I have an easy answer for a hundred million dollar shortfall and frankly, I don't. Um I don't think any of us on, on this stage do and I don't even think folks that have worked on city council would warrant to do for that. But I do think that there are, there's an idea of the kinds of things that I would target, if I can give you a good example. So as we're moving towards uh parts that use less gas, the gas tax has not provided the same amount of revenue that it did in years past, but people are still very dependent on those vehicles. I would love to see a return to more uh of an increase in the fees that for parking downtown um in those spaces. I think that's something that has been reduced so heavily in some areas that it's actually cheaper to take your car and park it downtown than it is to take public transit. Um and if you are taking public transit that is so close and it's more expensive, then what incentive do you have to not just take your car and be a single occupancy vehicle on the road? Um I would love to see some of those funds being used towards maintaining our trees. I think that shade equity is absolutely crucial, especially out of East Portland, the past district three frankly. Um during the last heat wave, I was doing distribution of frozen gay raid bottles for our unhoused neighbors. And I can tell you that the minute I crossed a hundredth street into deeper southeast, the, it felt ten degrees hotter. I was starting to get nauseous doing those deliveries and I can't imagine the unhoused folks that were out there every single day. So shade equity does need to be a top priority. And I absolutely do agree with Rex that we are not um using the goodwill of people that there's a lot of people that actually want to provide free labor to the city and want to invest in their community and the city does not give people the tools to do that. Um I used to do neighborhood cleanups um at encampments that were with the unhoused neighbors and we would spend from eleven AM till three PM cleaning up the campsite so that they wouldn't get swept. And then if we found the right agency to come pick up the garbage, sometimes they would cut open our garbage bags and tell us we had the wrong ones and leave all of the garbage junked out. So you are wasting um, you know, eight hours of free labor from people that are desperate and willing to help their city um at no charge. And I think that we, we should definitely invest in that goodwill. Thank you.
I believe that budgets are moral documents and if something like trees is underfunded, then it's because there are people in power that don't see them as important. Um you can find leaders in Portland that are joking, that will make jokes about trees and talk about them like they're extra. Um it's not a joke when East Portland is twenty degrees hotter than rural Hurst uh during a heat storm. That's a life or death issue and we need city councillors that see that and um will consider that when making budget decisions. And in terms of some concrete things you can do, I'm thinking about Representative Kam Phan, who is successful in the trees app to bring more funds to the tree, to the tree community, yeah. And so that's drawing funds down from a federal level. And we need, I know we need to do a much better job with allocating maintenance of newly planted young trees. There's no excuse to have baby trees dying in one spot. Um and I agree with Rex that we should be working with community works like Friends of Trees and that's going to help us expand our reach. It's also going to make our dollars go further. Thank you.
This next question, it's a G T one, heavy hitter, so good thing you had it before name review. Um, a major issue for all of Portland is the critical energy infrastructure hub, yeah. It's a six-mile stretch of land along the Limbert River in Northwest where three hundred and fifty million gallons of fuel is stored in the liquid fraction zone, many of which are in aging tanks that are not sized enough for it. Just stick with the extract of this, millions of paints, liquid fraction zone, and the looming threat of an earthquake. One of the companies operating in this area is a Houston-based fossil fuel company, Xenon Energy. Even, yeah, uh even though the CEI hub isn't in this district, Xenon trains travel through District Three and there's a quarter of million people who live in the plaza in the county, many of whom live in the district, so it's, it's personal. Uh by the time this new city council takes office in January, it's possible that a decision on Xenon Energy's pending DEQ permit will not have been made. And under Oregon administrative rule, three hundred and forty, zero one eight, zero zero five zero, a local government can revoke a land use compatibility statement for less. Yeah. Anytime before an air permit is granted by the state. There are several grounds that the council could rely on legally to revoke this permission. There's, the city didn't treat the Lux decision as a pleasant judicial process. Xenon did not fully supply information and Xenon's air permit application contains information that wasn't in their Lux application. When elected into office, do you commit to withdrawing Xenon's Lux? Given that the permit was granted to the company after confirmed legal law mean? Also, please share your policy ideas regarding how you will address the climate, ecological, and public health figures posed by the CEI hub. This time, um let's start with Rex and you have every other, so we're not Chris, Tiffany, yeah.
Okay, I'm the lucky one, okay. Um, the, the most important thing I've learned in my life is when you're in a hole, stop digging. Okay, we are in a hole in terms of our amendments to fossil fuels and our dependence on fossil fuels. So you have a chance to stop digging, right? You have a chance to say, no more. But you also should be saying, we, we already have a adopted plan that says we will be carbon neutral, carbon free, uh get rid of fossil fuels. By, I think, at twenty-fifth, the plan is adopted by the city, okay, legally adopted. That's, it seems like a long ways away, twenty-five years isn't that long. How do we get to zero? We have to start now, right? If we want to get to zero, we should be able to say we will lower the capacity of this critical energy hub, infrastructure, every year by one twenty-fifth, whatever that in these numbers is. But I think we start with saying that this is new capacity, is not required, not necessary, and not wanted.
Yay, yeah.
Because especially other voter, I am curious, is that a yes on you would withdraw because of what?
You didn't hear a yes in that.
So I would absolutely start the conversation to figure out how to revoke that permit. I have concerns, as I pointed out, this is ninety percent of the fuel for the state. So I'm imagining that if the city of Portland goes rogue against the rest of the state, there will be some, some reckoning for that.
Quickly, the CEI hub does ninety percent, Xenon does not have what is on the, the frame, but what is looking at?
Yes, uh Xenon, there's issues with how the permit was approved. Again, definitely want to find a way to revoke it and get to where we need to be on the just taking these dangerous fuels out of the corridors where people are. Right? We want to reduce our reliance entirely. We want to be able to no longer have to, to ship these across the state. Uh I think working closely with our partners, regional partners, and the rest of the state to figure out if you need to have this, if we all need to have this for now, who's going to bear that burden? Because as we pointed out, it's a huge amount of the, the fuel for the state. It's very dangerous where it's currently sorted, the CEI hub is going to slide into the limit and I'll be on fire in case of uh earthquake. But for right now, as those trains uh keep going through and I would say the, the trains at twelve street, the whole person? It's just, that's a different issue, but seriously, like when we, we look at this every day and we're kind of tracking this idea of this is the status quo and you want to change it, but people are going to say, oh, you can't because here's where they're going, here's where that money's coming from, it's part of the economic inclusion of state. And these are all perspectives to listen to, but also I'm going to probably raise Steven like over over profit.
Well, yes, I'm comfortable making that comment and it also depends on who is elected. Obviously, the city council, that's part of why these forums are so important. Uh I have been down to the CEI hub multiple times. I have gone with Pink the Tains. I also have gone with uh the founder of my school, um Sarah Taylor, and met someone that's like living right down there in shipping container. Like there are, it's really clear how vulnerable we all are, but there are also some people that, and some communities that are feeling this right now. Uh I believe the, the first thing is transparency and this, a lot of people would agree, that's how where this question came from, is it feels like there was a lack of transparency. Um, and because the process with Xenon wasn't public. Um I also just, I'm always going to think about things with an organizer lens because I am a community organizer and I'm thinking like we need more public education, people need more information about Xenon and the CEI hub. Um, and I think in, as a whole, we need to be framing our whole city, Portland, as a team working together with to fight climate change. Um, some concrete things, exploring uh regulating the storage tanks through local building code. Doing like, it seems like a bare minimum, but the polluters are the ones that need to be held responsible through responding, that they should be the ones that cover the, the insurance, the risk cost, um that should not be with the taxpayers. And it also means that there are larger goals of making sure that our city is a place where cars aren't kings, where, you know, cars are guests in certain areas and that we're prioritizing multimodal forms of transit. Um, and I know that in twenty twenty-two, there were some Portland legislators like Denbro who um yeah, passed some plans that are going to be coming up again and I think we need to make sure that we're like looking at those work closely.
So we all know the Xenon energy deal happened and it's like a heartfelt backflip. And maybe that's ours. I don't think you can do that to the ball anymore. Thank God. Thanks. Um. I'm going to pull curtain a little bit here. I think a lot of us on this stage that lobby about the CEI hub. There are a lot of trade unions in particular that would work on that hub, that would bring the materials to and from that hub. And so my message to you today is be a little bit skeptical of some of the endorsements that some people have gotten because some of those endorsements came with commitments around the CEI hub that are the exact kind of commitments that got us in this mess today. I will fight this Xenon energy permit by whatever means are available to me in City Hall. We need to reduce the carbon emissions four percent every year, one twenty-fifth. Uh I don't know if we've ever done four percent in a year ever in the city. That means we need to redouble, we triple, like ruble our efforts to move us away from fossil fuels. If we got rid of the CEI hub without reducing our reliance on fossil fuels, then we're going to be putting those fossil fuel infrastructure out in Barbara, poorer communities. It has to start in particular with reducing our use so that we just don't need those facilities anymore. There's a lot of buildings downtown that were, used to be very economically useful and now they're not and they're sitting there empty. That's what we need to do in the CEI hub. We need to make that stuff obsolete. And the only way to do that, I love this song, it's great, uh the only way to do that is to reduce our reliance on these fossil fuels. We need to stop using them. And that starts with each and every one of us. And that's why I would like to see us fully remove the CEI hub by twenty fifty. Make it obsolete, get rid of it because I'm scared of that, that are quick.
Um so yeah, I support the journey. Um, I also agree that um we need to gradually um reduce our fossil fuel consumption and um I think doing it all at once like be kind of hard, but I think doing it gradually is more realistic. Um, something that I'm concerned about is the people who live closest to the CEI hub, um whether they are aware of what's going on. Um this kind of reminds me of like the Portland Harbor and um the river being contaminated and, you know, it's another Portland, many folks did not know, or if they did know, then they felt like disappowered or like they felt like, okay, then what can I do? Um so I think it's really important for um, you know, organizations like three fifty and um, you know, organizations that are focused on the climate movement to make sure that communities are aware of what's going on. And I think that can really empower them to fight back and to mobilize. Um so I think, yeah, just more education and transparency um and uh yeah, that would really, I think, push people to mobilize and fight for um to get rid of it. So, yeah.
Um, Daniel, weren't you endorsed by Renee Gonzalez and the Portland Police Bureau that is kind of like a subset dollars to be used the for police last month? Look, I think there's a lot of trades unions that have some issues with climate and green energy projects because they think it threatens their jobs. I don't think that these movements are actually diametrically opposed for going to need to the trades in order to build a lot of the clean energy infrastructure. Um and I'm excited about that. To answer your question, I am fully in support of, of revoking the Xenon permit, permit. The fact that that happened behind closed doors, I think, has led to a lot of mistrust within um Portlanders about what happens in City Hall, a lack of transparency and a lack of access to this decision-making. Um we absolutely need to revoke the permit, not allow them to extend any further. And as far as what we need to do for the CEI hub with so much oil stored in that one area where it will be a huge disaster that will cost billions of dollars in cleanups. Um I think that I would go to you as experts for this frankly. Um you know, I think the values are there and I need some experts to guide me as far as climate change policy and I'm not ashamed to say that we can't be experts in every area. But I think that we first need to make sure that we are um moving the oil so that it's not all in the same spot. Um maybe working with our state legislators to figure out safer storage for it as we are transitioning into a new climate just future where we're not relying so heavily um on oil for all of our infrastructure. And I look forward to working as a city council member to ensure that we are investing in public infrastructure, public transit, biking pedestrian stuff so that people don't have to be so far reliant. And we also can't really rely on uh green energy, uh fuel-efficient vehicles as our only solution either. We really need to make sure that things are local, um that they are easy to access. Those vehicles are extremely costly and the average person can't afford them. So I want to make sure that everything is easily and easily accessible. Thank you. We're getting close to the end, two questions left. Um this one, we can do a quick, quick speed round, some of the, some of the elements have been included, but Portland's motto is the city that works, when it really should be the city that plans. We're really good at the thought process. Did you know Portland has approved five climate action plans over the last twenty-plus years? Uh but we have a harder time following through to allocate sufficient funding and to make sure that the plans are implemented. The current Climate Emergency Work Plan is next year. With the city signaling, they will develop the new Climate Adjustments Plan. As a city councillor, I will make sure the current and new plans actually get fully implemented with appropriate funding. Uh this time, we'll start with Ahlem and then go counterfuck.
Thank you. Um, I think it would be really cool to have like a, another committee. I know people might have issues with electric committees, but um a committee that's um where people, where it's like low-income and frontline communities um who can hold um folks accountable. Um, I think also just, I mean, I'm not sure if he said um already does like annual reports. I mean, I don't think he's ever done annual reports, but um sorry, uh.
Well, Jeff, um how are we going to make sure that we, when we're moving on these plans and happy, obviously, the first plan is creating another
Yeah, um I'm just saying, yeah, committees and having folks who are actually um in communities to be a part of the plan in some way, the integrated, a part of like the decision-making process. Um and can be able to like work folks accountable to this plan, so, um so yeah.
Well, I'm actually going to speak out in defense of our community because I moved here forty-six years ago. Uh unemployment rate was eighteen percent, twenty-five percent, interbirth or eighteen percent. Uh unemployment rate was eighteen percent, twenty five percent intra birth or eighteen percent to buying a house. The neighborhood I moved into was seventy five percent low income and fifty percent African American, that's called Irvington today. Okay, Irvington has changed a lot, it is now actually, I grew down with it because it got a little too huge for me. And I wanted a little more funk, so I moved to Southeast Portland, but uh we did make some mistakes. We did not save affordable housing when we could have. Of course, who knew whether we were heading towards Detroit or heading towards Portland, but it took the work of the community to change that. The government did respond, we did plan, but we actually achieved a lot of things. If you look at the region, we maintain urban growth boundary that maintains viable farming, farmers markets. I was one of the start, I was one of the founders of the first farmer's market in Portland, it was in northeast Portland. It was really hard to find any farmers that actually grew crops or foreland, they were growing grass seed and wheat. And hops, other things, but not food for people in Portland. The movement started and was supported because we protected the urban growth boundary. And so our farms are successful right near the border and our farmers markets are fantastic. So we do plan, but we achieve some things. What we need to do is turn plans into measurable outcomes that we hold our government accountable for. And we need to do that, and this is very urgent in this area especially, and but that's, I just do want to say, we've accomplished a lot. Portland is a great place to live compared to what it was when I first moved here, and people come here for that. So action outcomes, take it happen.
Uh there are some issues that we haven't handled that are very complicated, no healthcare, drug addiction, public safety. Climate movement, climate issue in particular, I think is pretty simple. We can measure our effectiveness with just two numbers. How much are we reducing carbon emissions per capita? And how many fewer deaths are we seeing from exposure and from Easter? And I think the solution to stop, to ensure that we stop making plans we don't follow through on is we should stop making plans. We should be making hypotheses. We should be saying, look, we think that if you give our organization ten million dollars. We will be able to measure a five percent reduction in the carbon emissions per capita the same day. And if it fails, that's actually really useful information, because that means that we don't need to try that again. Right? We keep putting out plans because there's a lot of consultants who make a lot of money, they're trying to make a plan. But we also keep putting out plans because then every time we come back for reelection, we got, we get to talk about those plans. We don't get to talk about results, right? If we want to get that four percent reduction every year, we're gonna have to come up with some hypotheses and test them. And the approaches that don't work, we're gonna have to stop doing, the approaches that work, we're gonna have to start doing. Right now, we're sending a piece of dollars, we're getting some reduction in the carbon emissions for as little as a few dollars per pound. And some for as high as a thousand dollars a pound. I don't know why we're not destroying all that money as a sport of all our power emissions, because every time we don't, we are damaging people overseas to death.
I'm not sure how anyone could have lived through the heat dome and not feel some deep urgency around action in this area. We have to be treating this like it's life or death, it is. Um some of my ideas about the simple things we can do, um we have the role of the chief sustainability officer. I would support um bumping that up and making it a more prominent role, making that be something that uh holds more power. Have that role be um like on par with some of the the other deputy high up roles. There's a lot of talk about city county relationship, coordination, working together. Usually that's around homelessness and baby girl health, that makes sense. It also needs to be around climate justice, it also needs to be about preparing for climate emergencies. Um and also there's a new uh sustainability and climate commission that was formed this year. And it needs to be empowered and enforced and actually be able to hold. Polluters and bad actors accountable, so making sure that you know it's just on another plan or another committee, another commission that like. They actually have power that they can use. And at the end, I think the most important thing is that we have people on council that are going to hold our climate commitments as a must.
Yeah, um making sure that the. No, you're fine, a lot of questions.
Uh probably make sure that the current and new plans, like the kind of plan that is next year, actually get fully implemented with appropriate funding.
Thanks for looking at me. Um I think largely what we've seen as far as a lack of implementation is the fact that we didn't have a political system that supported candidates that are actually going to focus on climate. The fact that we have a robust small donor elections program, the fact that many of us here on the station, including myself, have signed the no fossil fuel money pledge. The fact that we are beholden to community and not to oil companies means that we are inherently going to serve you differently than the people that have been there before us. I think that we have a lot of wonderful plans made by a lot of people, frankly, a lot smarter than me on many of these issues. I think that our job as legislators will be to follow through and make sure that those things are actually um going to get prioritized and done. And I think that a lot of us will be able to do that because we're not taking oil money. Um I also think a key focus of the new city council is going to be to hire a city manager that has a lot of expertise in climate justice, climate infrastructure. This rule is gonna be absolutely critical, and I frankly can't say that we have a mayoral candidate that I think has strong enough climate values to be making that decision. Because they're going to be um largely in charge of choosing the city manager and then the city council is going to be able to veto or vote them in. Um but I think that as a legislative body, we can really hold the mayor accountable and making sure that this is part of the criteria. For what we're looking for in a city manager who can implement the kind of vision and city that we want with a just climate future, thank you.
So I've worked for the city since twenty thirteen and trust, we are just as tired of the plans and the meetings, the meetings, the plan, with the plan. Uh so we have a great twenty thirty five comprehensive plan that has a whole segment on man use policy for climate justice. Uh we have amazing staff and hopefully we will uh affirm an amazing city manager to help implement these policies. Because our job is going to be legislation, our job is gonna be serving you, our job is gonna be getting out of employees' hair and letting them get their jobs done, okay? Uh one of the things that we can do, and one of the things that again, as somebody who's been at the city for over ten years, if it's not in the budget, it's not real. We need to allocate money to the implementation, we need to allocate money to the ability to follow the rules. Uh so just in like the past five years, there's been like three or four different racial equity plans and a sort of cycle through those. People have been elected and someone else gets elected, they start their own plan and I'm really glad that's going to end under this new system of government. Um one thing that has come out of it is that we have equity managers that are assigned to each bureau and we're gonna have a citywide equity uh manager. And I think bringing that over to climate justice and making sure we have it not just a climate coordinator at the top of the chain. But a climate justice manager at each bureau would be uh an effective way to start moving things forward.
Now we're on the last question, it's a last minute one, so you might not have seen it, think of it as a fun topic. Uh and then we'll also have an extra thirty seconds for everyone to wrap up last last minute um pieces. Um so the question from southeast I've left is about forty percent of Oregon's emissions come from the transportation sector. Reducing vehicle miles traveled in single occupancy vehicles is a key strategy for reducing these emissions. What specific strategies will you enact? And how will you ensure that the administrators are accountable in achieving these goals if you are left in? And we'll do a piece and then do the every other, so that way.
Put me on the spot with the last minute questionnaire, I didn't see this one beforehand, um but I think that what I will say is that uh. The city and the state have um. A habit of making changes before implementing supportive structures. And I think that without those supportive structures, we see that people get really frustrated with with other limitations that are put on them. So I'm gonna sound like I'm really beating a dead horse, but as someone that doesn't have access to my own car, that is transit and bike dependent. We really need a robust transportation system. The entire time, the entire reason I ended up getting a bike this past year was because the buses coming every twenty minutes. And asked for the bus twenty on a crucial line on Burnside, um bus fifteen crucial line on Belmont that routes the entire city. Um the fact that our buses come so infrequently that you can't even get your groceries or you have to wait twenty minutes before you get onto the next one is unacceptable. And a lack of um acceptability we will see is making it really hard for people to actually use alternative modes of transportation. If we want people to use those things, we have to make them usable. And I would also love to work with China on making our bus shelters also more accessible and weatherproof. Um Tiffany and I actually stood in some horrific rain the other day because the bus shelter was extremely small and did not really help us out very much. Um and on top of that, they're not really accessible, our anti homeless infrastructure has made it so the benches are deeply uncomfortable to sit on. Uh you have slanted benches, which when I was injured years ago, um it was physically impossible to actually sit and wait at the bus stop. And many of our disabled community members are unable to use them now. So I think that restoring people's dignity by making those quick, easy changes um as far as getting more bus shelters, making them accessible. Getting rapid transit is all going to be the best way to get people out of their cars. Because if we make it easier to take public transit than to take a car, people are gonna do what's most convenient. You have to design for human behavior and not giveaway range.
I agree, you have to make it the easier option to not ride a car. Um and the more that we can invest in making sure that people feel people are safe. Biking, walking, I scooter, I rarely use a scooter to Sunday's high school every day. Um and my own two boys bike to school, uh we need to make sure that we're designing our roads for safety, not speed. I legitimately blocked somewhere G D S was killed just sitting at the bus stop, likely working at the library. So it also makes sense that some people feel scared sending their kids to bike. Um so we, the more that we can invest in making sure that folks can do these things safely, the the better it's gonna be for everyone. And um I'm also for, you know, as something, starting with something like free youth passes for China, like. I think that will, that would be great to then hopefully have uh be able to at one point just have it be fearless for everyone.
I'm gonna respond to a point uh here where, you know, I sat down with the police association, we talked about health safety. We sat down, it's awesome to talk about health safety. Bryant just came out yesterday, the study, survey, uh coming that eighty three percent of their riders, like myself. Have felt unsafe the last year because of the behavior of other riders and. And I would love to see transit be free, I'd love to see transit be fast, I'd love for transit to be fun, right? I think something I'm disappointed about is where did, where did all the fun ads go? The buses are empty now, uh you cannot get people to take public transit if they're worried about their safety. Just full stop, even if it's free, even if it's fast, even if it's reliable. If people have the opportunity to otherwise take a car and not have to see someone who's on, who is. Experiencing severe malaleness that we should be helping, they will take that car. They'll take their bike too, and I think that's really important, I put five hundred miles on my bike over the course of this campaign. And I pledged today that I will take ninety percent of my trips to City Hall via bike and bus and walk in. Because that's, it's not just because I hate parking downtown, because it's important to me, I think that leaders need to walk the walk and not just talk the talk. I think too often, we're thinking about some ideas that I would love to see happen. But right now, we're up against a budget of this year of at least five percent. And what I want to think about more than anything else is, what are the ways that we can use the funds we already have to make as large of an impact as possible? And I always want to circle back to this fact, how much money does it take to save a life? Any guesses? The global standard, the best way that you can save a life is distributing mosquito bed nets in Southern Africa. And for every five thousand dollars you spend distributing mosquito bed nets, you save one life. So every time we talk about spending seventy thousand dollars to plant a tree, I think about the tens of people whose lives we could have otherwise saved. That's why I think it's really important that when we're spending funds, we're thinking about how we can have as great of an impact as possible. And right now, the best way to get people to ride transit more often, the best way to get people to take their bike more often, the best way to get people to walk more often. Is to make sure that they feel safe too, so, thank you.
There's big and large things we can do to improve things, and if you talk to traffic engineers, they'll say there's three components of making streets safe. One is engineering, so let's turn all our four lane streets into foster boulevard as a start. If you've written down a fox, it is to write down fossil bike lanes and sidewalks and crossings. And the business community is prospering because of that. The other one is through education, is what has happened to our safe house to school programming. Where we train them on how to be safe on the street and they grow up to be safer drivers, safer road users. Okay, occasionally some schools have it, but we do not have it in our soul, we don't require driver education, we get a driver's license. So people are ignorant about how to perform on the road and yet they can drive a car. The third is enforcement, and we dropped traffic enforcement in the city during the protests of Black Lives Matter. Because of the concerns about stopping people because of their color. And so people are speeding, they're doing donuts, they're running red lights, I rarely see two or three people running red light every time I stop at a stoplight. The other, so small things, we can start doing those kind of programs, it'll make a difference. Say uh we used to have something called smart trips that encouraged people and taught them about how to use alternatives. Then we can do big things, let's remove the I five bridge or I five on the East Bank. You know, I, twenty years ago, I was in a committee with Eric Mayor of Ruricat, and we talked about burying the freeway and very doable, but who stopped? ODOT stopped it, because the other thing we had to do is put a toll on the interstate freeway system through our community. So it's not just people driving their cars, it's all the trucks that drive through our communities too that are encouraged and subsidized to do that. So big things, little things that we can do to in the transportation sector that don't rely on you being virtuous, but design the system so it works.
Um I think it's really simple, we definitely need um better public transportation system. I'm surprised that Portland um doesn't have a really good one, I always said I wanted to live in the north or the east coast. Because um you can get everywhere on subway um or walk for me. So I think we definitely need more um walkable neighborhoods. Um I know my community tends to drive a lot because we tend to have a lot of kids and the most reliable and safest mode of transportation to you. There may be, um there's also a lot of people from my community who have to take public transportation or have to take the bus. Um because that's the only affordable option for them, so I think it's really important that um it's safe. Um I personally, I had to stop wearing public transportation um in during the pandemic. Um because it became really unsafe and unreliable. Um so I got my license uh about four years ago. Um I still couldn't try it to like school P S U and um to get around sometimes, but I will say guys. There's a many occasion where it felt unsafe for me as a black woman. Um especially after Trump was elected, that was a very traumatizing time. Um so yeah, I think um making our public transportation um safer, um that doesn't mean hiring more cops or. But you know, I need a, I need a, we can create your vehicles. Um and maybe a more walkable um walkable neighborhoods and yeah.
Having a big fun day over the first time, because now I'm the last two. But definitely safer streets, more walkable neighborhoods, uh public bathrooms, and we only know that. Additionally, it's, it's, it's hard to take away this assumption and forgive me if this is rude, but where are we going? Like, because I would rather go to my neighborhood coffee shop, I would rather walk down to a corner store. I would rather be able to walk my way around my neighborhood, be engaged, be active with my neighbors and spend my days that way. I would rather be able to walk my way around my neighborhood, be engaged, be active with my neighbors and spend my days that way. Like, I love going to a special event, right? And so uh, we heard about the fifteen bus before. The fifteen will take you from Spark by eighty second all the way down Belmont. Like, you can, you can get deep into southeast. Uh, and without having to park, without having to figure out how you're gonna get home where they're at, even if they decided. It carries you after an event, get a little tipsy, right? Public transportation is safe. Um, and. It's always interesting to me to hear people who move through the world as men talking about how now they're scared on public transit. Of course, we, we feel for our neighbors, we feel for people who are going through, uh, whether it's, it's mental illness or whether they're going through addiction. But when I'm, when I'm on the bus, it is generally not somebody, I'm not scared of them because they're unhoused. Right? They're generally scared of them because they're a man acting erratically. And you can do that whenever your economic status, whatever your housing status. Pull that back in, sorry.
All right, well, thank you all again. Thank you all for making the time out of such a busy season to be with us. It means a lot. Um, I'm super excited. Thank you all for coming. If you're curious, the recording will be on our website. So if you want to send it to friends, loved ones, talk about it. Um, candidates will be around for Batha question. Yeah, whatever it's about. Um, last things, uh, if you're wanting to see the climate justice footage, if you're some hurricane or working on it, you're stuck there. Want to work for three fifty, I think you all have materials and lots of climate thing events. Yeah, go teams.
All right.